I've gone to different events to speak for Habitat for Humanity. And it's just been a joy. It's been since nineteen ninety-nine. They started in January of ninety-nine and completed my house in May of ninety-nine. We started a neighborhood association out there in New Hope. Our neighborhood association is New Hope Village Believers. We were trying to at least be a part and express our concerns as far as being a part of community in the city of Montgomery, being a community where we could be, you know, outstanding and represented. And so far that's been, you know, okay, pretty good. When, as years come, we start having different problems and issues and stuff with our neighborhoods. Some of those concerns, you know, we had discussions with Mr. Gregory about them. I've expressed the desire to be on the board as a homeowner, to just kind of keep things abreast. When he was up here, I did want to kind of just say that I would like to volunteer with him, if that was okay, to be a board member. So I guess I'll have to reach out with him in the process of saying that I'd like to be a board member and see if we can get a couple of other homeowners out there to be on the board as well. We have other issues and things that are kind of problems in our neighborhood. We're trying to get our neighborhood association back established in the right way so that we can be transparent because we had issues in the past. So we have homeowners that are hesitant about being in our neighborhood association. So I thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak, Commissioner Shanks. Thank you, and I hope at some point with you and us working together with the neighborhood and with Mr. Gregory, Habitat for Humanity, we can get some things done. Because our dream was to have a playground area at the end of our property. To have, sorry, to have a playground area so our kids can have somewhere to play. And we were looking forward to putting a shelter and little area for cookout, grilling, and things like that, so our neighbors could have a place to be up there attentive while the children had an area to play with, putting playground equipment and things of that nature in the area. So I thank you for allowing me to speak.
I think you'll make a fine board member, Ms. Sales. And I encourage you to petition Ms. Walker and some of the other board members about the availability of, rather, creating that slot for one of the residents.
Okay. Are you aware of the time that the board members meet?
No, I'm going to find that out for you. Ms. Walker's right up there. She'll be able to help you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I come to you as a concerned citizen. On the community action situation, I was the one that headed up the tenants and other residents of Montgomery to go to community actions. I have been doing community work for the last three years, working, I have my own after-school program. We're on hold right now due to COVID. But as we all know as families, there are some of us out here that's disabled. There are some of us out here that are veterans. There are some of us out here that has had to leave their jobs due to their children, having to do virtual. And these people are going up to this window and literally being turned around seeing that they are not taking applications at this moment, instead of giving clarification of what's really going on and how this system works, to give these constituents some kind of belief or something to go on, far as losing their house, far as Alabama Power turning their lights off, far as them not getting heating. Majority of those people that were out there on Monday were elderly people, disabled people that needed assistance. I called Commissioner Shanks, and I told him what was going on. There was approximately twenty people that came along due to me, and then there were others that showed up in the midst of. They were being turned down as well. I asked them for their name, address, and phone number to just see if I could get them some assistance. Commissioner Shanks came down, and he spoke with Mr. Jones. They went in, they talked. He, Mr. Jones came to me, Mr. Shanks left. Mr. Jones came to me and said, "Ms. Austin, I will do, take, get the ones that are getting ready to be evicted now, the ones power bills are, well, not the eviction," she said, "because March thirty-first, they cannot be put out, and we'll try to get it taken care of by then." My only concern is Alabama Power don't understand that. These landlords are not understanding that. These people need help. I need help sometimes, and not all the times. But if I do need it, I don't expect to go there and get turned away at the window. And you've had, you're having to sit outside. I have nineteen different underlying conditions, illnesses. So me sitting outside in the cold and in the snow right now is not feasible. But now, prior to all of these people going, prior to Monday, they were being turned around. Prior to me telling them not to leave, to Mr. Shanks calls, we were all being turned around at that window. We, we are not taking applications. If you call, they say, "Okay, start calling on Wednes, on Thursday from, at nine o'clock." You start calling at eight fifty-five up until nine fifteen. They call, my daughter called. She's a young mother. She's a nurse. She works for one medical out in Chase Park, East Chase. But she's had to take off due to her children, okay? She goes, she started calling at eight fifty-five on Thursday. At nine fifteen, Ms. McGee told her that, "I've got my twenty-five people for today." When we got up to the window, after Mr. Shanks got there, she come up with a list. And she said she had eight or four people already on the list. These people need reassurance. These people need help. COVID is not being judgmental. COVID is not, it's not the time to point fingers. It's not the time to lack. If you don't have provisions, I can't tell you nobody what to do. But it just seems necessary that, that we're going through this pandemic right now. There should be special provisions, that these people get some kind of reassurance, that they're going to get the assistance that they need in a timely manner. These people were getting ready to be cut off on Thursday. There's a man over in Chase Park that is on oxygen. His lights are getting ready to get cut off. One lady came to me, and I'm not going to make it too many names because I can't remember them all, but I have a list. A young lady came to me, and she had got approved in January, received the letter. Then when she go, they said, "But right now, there's no funding." That's understandable, okay, because she got clarification. But then when the funding came in, she was still not notified. She should have been one of the top on the list because she had already received that letter. There, I have proof of these things that I speak of. These are not, I, the way I look at it is, a person with, with money or a person that's not in this situation cannot empathize with a person that is currently going through this. So I stand in the gap for the community of Montgomery and tell you that these people need assistance now, not later. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I've got, uh... Is this Queen Tate?
Hello, Commissioners. How are you doing this morning?
All right.
This afternoon. Looks like it's about time for us to have lunch. But I wanted you to know that a young lady that was speaking a few minutes ago, she called me in. And I'm an advocate for Alabama, which they call me the Queen of the Black Belt. A lot of you know my face by being with Hank Sanders and Rose Sanders. And so a lot of times I'll step in when there's something actually going wrong in the community. And I try to make things happen. But I want you to know that I want to volunteer, and I want to be the best volunteer in Montgomery, Alabama. I moved here two years ago from Selma, Alabama. Every year I lead that march from Selma to Montgomery. Yes, I am queen, but you know, it's something different. It's something special about us all. And all of us have something that we can do for our community. And we have to love our community. And I love Alabama. Another thing, I'm not from Alabama. I am from Queens, New York. And I'm also Alabama New South Coalition. And so I just want to speak to you and let you know, if you need me anyway, any kind of way that you need for me to volunteer and be the best volunteer. I am a volunteer that I love to volunteer and work in the community. Yes, I am on disability and social security. I'm a caregiver for a veteran, a Vietnam veteran that's eighty years old. And he's, he's, he's my father. And so when I went to the, um, the community action to have my bill paid, to help him get his bill paid, I was turned down. I was one of the ones that was turned down. And I, and, and I was very concerned about that, and because I had more people that I knew that they needed their bills paid. And they, they called my phone as well, you know, for help, because they know that I like to know about the different things that's going in the community. Food, pantries, um, food outlets, and different places that people can go to get help. So I just wanted you to know that I was concerned. That's why I came out. And it's to more people that still need their bills paid. But this morning, the community action did call me and say that we want you to come in on tomorrow and to, we, we apologize for what we have done. So thank you so much, and I appreciate what y'all are doing, and y'all keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's it. Let me go to the agenda.
We'll consider the minutes of the regular meeting of February second, twenty twenty-one.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider the accounts pay-
Go slow.
I'm sorry.
Oh, what happened?
It's us, it's not you.
No, it's...
Okay.
Consider the accounts payable checks and payroll checks.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider a resolution for resurfacing Wasden Road and Lamar Road.
Move for approval.
Second. Any objection? So ordered.
Chairman Dean?
I thought, I mastered first.
I asked you.
Okay. Still mastering, it's still not there. I mastered right this way. Who is it?
Me.
Okay.
Consider fiscal year twenty twenty-one grant agreement with the Department of Youth Services for housing juveniles at the Montgomery County Youth Facility for Otaga, Butler, Chilton, Elmore, and Monroe Counties.
So moved.
Second. Any objection? So ordered. Do the vote again?
Daniel. Okay.
There we go.
Consider sale of a Ford Explorer K-9 unit to the Macon County Sheriff's Department Office.
Move for approval.
Second. Any objection? So ordered.
Consider an amendment to the agreement with county attorneys Tyrone Means and Thomas Galyon for legal services.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Hmm, yes, sir.
Consider amendment number three to a contract with Kelwell Food Management for inmate food service.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Chairman.
Yeah, hit this thing first.
Consider an agreement between the Alabama Department of Transportation and Montgomery County concerning funding for resurfacing Woodley Road from Mount Zion Road northward to the Montgomery City Limits.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider miscellaneous, oh... Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies. During the meeting, we added twenty-five hundred dollars to Samaritan Counseling Center from Commissioners Harris, Dean, Walker, and Singleton, and removed Commissioner Harris's five thousand dollar contribution appropriation.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
There are no appropriations for education to be considered.
Okay.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue. During the meeting, five thousand dollars was added for Kappa Alpha Psi Godright Foundation by Commissioner Harris from his designated revenue. Ten thousand dollars from joint designated revenue was appropriated to Samaritan Counseling Center.
Hold on a minute. Is it too late for me to split that with you? Kappa Godright? Florence, I want to split that with him. The five thousand, I want to do twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred, please.
For the same.
So that will be twenty-five hundred dollars each from Chairman Dean and Commissioner Harris to Kappa Alpha Psi Godright Foundation.
I want to deliver. Okay.
We also added a twenty thousand dollar appropriation from joint infrastructure to Leadership Montgomery, committing to twenty thousand dollars a year for three years, if available.
Okay. Move for approval.
That was all the additions.
Second.
Any objection? Was that all of them?
Mm-hmm.
Any objection? So ordered. One more vote.
Mr. Chairman. Okay.
Consider budget change request number one for the youth facility detention.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered. Walker?
Well, my voting thing's not on my screen. I'm, I moved my agenda. Now I got it.
Okay.
Consider a position fill request for the detention facility for a corrections officer trainee.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection?
Go ahead, Dan.
So ordered.
Consider a position fill request for the district attorney's office for a legal support assistant.
So moved.
Second. Any objection? So ordered.
Consider a position fill request for the engineering department for a county road equipment operator two.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection?
Dan, you got that you want me to?
I got it.
Consider a position fill request for the probate judge's office for three customer service clerks and a probate court clerk.
Move for approval.
Second. Any objection? So ordered.
Consider a position fill request for the purchasing department for a buyer one.
So moved.
Second. Any objection? So ordered.
Consider position fill request for the sheriff's office for a deputy sheriff trainee, a deputy sheriff part-time, and a public safety communications dispatcher.
Move for approval.
Second. Any objection? So ordered.
Consider, consider travel training requests from engineering, the sheriff's office, and tax and audit.
Move for approval.
Any objection? Oh, I got a second.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
During the information session, you agreed to consider amendment number two to a contract with NCIC，在mate communications for inmate telephone service, telephone system in service as a waiver ruled item.
Any objection, waiver rule?
No objections, so moved.
Second. All them papers there, aye?
Aye.
That's all of our items.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney, you have anything?
No, sir.
Mr. Engineer?
No, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Shanks?
No, sir.
Oh.
You make something up.
Something wrong.
I'm good.
Commissioner Shanks?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted, again, say good morning to everyone, and I wish you continued safety and well-being. I think it's important, Mr. Chairman, and to the rest of my fellow commission, that we continue to open up the process to our citizens. And I'm glad that we did not use COVID as an excuse to deny the citizens opportunity to speak to us. I know the seat of Montgomery, for whatever reason, have eliminated that portion of the city council meeting from their agenda, and that concerns me. So I just want to applaud the Mr. Chairman and my fellow commission for giving the citizens an opportunity to speak and not using, I mean, in fact, I think it's important, in particular under the conditions that we find ourselves, to continue to have transparency and give the citizen opportunity to be heard. So thank you all for that.
I agree. Thank you.
Commissioner Walker?
Are, are we going back to any business? Or are we, have we finished our business? We are?
We got a couple more.
Okay, so I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Neither do I, Dana.
Nothing.
Okay. Okay, we'll recess back into our informal session. I do what I need to, John, I just mean.
Yes, sir. Under the general information items that we did not cover early...
Okay.
Is a proposed memorandum of agreement with the city of Montgomery and the Moore-Ziegler Group for Small and Minority Business Support Initiative Program.
Uh, we got, uh, and this is, uh, we got RFPs, and I'm pretty sure, I think Florence said she gave everybody a RFP. What do you all want to do? Nothing has been decided on for minority contract. We, we agreed that we would go back and do RFPs. So we need to discuss the ones that we got.
Chairman, I, uh, first of all, the, this, the, the group that we're proposing to enter into an agreement with, it's totally unacceptable. We had them under contract for three years, and they produced absolutely nothing. When I tried to talk to them about it, they were belligerent about it. So they're unacceptable. Now, we have, we have an RFP out there, and we received some responses. The responses that I've seen were actually, the proposals were great proposals, but they were way out of reach in terms of the amounts that they were looking for. Um, I've spoken to a couple of them, and I think that can be worked out. I think that their reading of the RFP was broader than what we actually want them to do. And I think if we were to go through the specific things that we want them to do, we'll come up with a, 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 a consultant who can, can set goals, reach those goals, and do what we really need done. We have not been serious, as a commission, for the last four years about achieving our goal of thirty percent minimum participation by continuing to renew contracts with this group. That's been so ineffective. So I, I think that, uh, in addition to the ones that we've seen and the ones that I've talked to, I, I've asked for, we should be, we should be getting a couple more RFPs. So this is not done yet. I think we still have more people to consider for this, and people that would be, and organizations that would be more effective at it.
Okay, all right. Well, I, we all have a right to disagree, and I disagree totally. Uh, it's no secret I am for Moore-Ziegler Group, because, uh, the proposal that we've been looking at, we didn't write that proposal. Uh, Mr. James, not James, but Doug Moore, who was Clumman Ziegler's dad, wrote the counterproposal along with Dr. Booth at Alabama State. So we didn't come up with the language in that it's for thirty percent. And I think if we knew all the specifics, it was not that group's fault what happened, because we did not let that person know, the persons that didn't know, the persons that never know. Every time there was a bid or something was out there, they did not know that. And I think our administrator can vouch for that now. Uh, the department here, the constitutional office, all, everybody has to buy into that program. That was not that group's fault because they didn't produce. The guy that, uh, that did Sheriff's House up on Heron Street, Mr. Lee, they, he came from, she bought him on board. Uh, Jana Rains, the architect, she bought him on board. And she gave, uh, the people in the facility a lot of names that never were called. So we had to do our part. We all had to buy into it. But that's just me, it's five of us up there, so you know.
If I had to correct one thing you said, I drafted that, our minority, women and minority initiative, I drafted that, uh, proposal, and this commission adopted the thirty percent minimum. I don't know the other people you're talking about, but I didn't talk to them. They had absolutely nothing to do with it. Uh, it was, it was I who took that initiative, and I who coordinated, and this commission voted to have that done. These other people, I don't know who you're talking about. All these other things that you've mentioned, if they were having these issues, these issues should have been brought to the commission's attention. They never were. We got two reports. One of them, a third grader could have written. So these people are totally ineffective and unqualified.
That is not true.
Well, I'm saying it because, and this is, my experience with Baird Out, we can look at, we can look at what they did. You can look at the reports that they wrote, the misspelled words, the bad grammar, and the, and the, and the lack of any kind of tangible content. They should not have ever, I don't understand why the city still want a contract with them.
I would challenge you to get, get the notes and stuff and show me the bad grammar. I'd challenge you to do that, because that is not true.
Well, uh, we, the RFP is still open, and we're still, we're still considering on that.
It's time to close it. And whatever the commission wants to do, it's, it's fine with me. But, you know, we, we procrastinate on this minority issue.
No, 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 no.
Because we got stuff that we could be doing right now.
We're not procrastinating.
The people could benefit from it.
We, we want somebody, I want somebody in the position-
Well, that's what you're saying, you want somebody.
No, I don't have anybody in particular like you. I'm not pushing a certain party. I'm pushing for effectiveness. And to have something done.
It's because I know what they're doing, and because I've been working with them.
They've done-
I would not do anything to incriminate this commission or put them behind anything. So, you know, let some other folks talk.
No, we hadn't had any real progress, Mr. Chairman, on the minority participation. There have been millions and millions of dollars spent of the taxpayers' money, and I don't think we've been serious about getting an effective program in place. But it's going to be left up to, uh, the minority business community, I think, to begin to rally the, their, their, well, they don't have members. They need to get organized, to be honest with you. If they were organized, an organized body of the, the skilled labors, the architects, the bricklayers, the carpenters, plumbers, et cetera, electricians, we wouldn't be having discussion, because we've already had, we already have a viable minority participation program. Uh, but they have gotten to get together and come to this body and petition this body to do better, because we have not done anything. And it's been mostly politics and nothing serious as relates to minority participation. And I, I just don't see it happening unless they organize and come to us with that, with that type of clout.
Mr. Chairman, with the, uh... With the Whitewater project coming up- Mr. Chairman, with the Whitewater project coming up, it's critical that we make sure we have the right people and the right persons in place. I know the...I attended the cooperative district board meeting last week, and the cooperative district is 100% on board to make sure that the project is represented by our community, and everybody is involved. And the cooperative district board, I know, is making their great strides and will be coming to us soon with a request, proposal, request, to make sure that we do have minority and women-owned businesses involved in the Whitewater project. And we're taking extra steps to make sure that happens. So, it's critical that we make sure that whoever's leading this charge, that we all feel somewhat, we can't always agree, but that we feel comfortable going forward.
My concern and reminder is just that while we want to see an increase in minority participation, that is merely a goal without any ability from the commission to enforce that. That is our hope and our goal, and we can certainly do everything we can to help encourage and prepare the minority contractors and subs to be prepared to bid and win some of these contracts, but we cannot force a quota on work from Montgomery County. That said, we need to be crystal clear in our directive to whoever gets this contract. And I think that that's, in my opinion, that's been a weakness all along, is we haven't had tangible, realistic goals for this program.
I used to worry quotas.
Well, we have to follow state bid law.
Yeah, but I know, I don't...I think quotas implies that you're just giving somebody something when they're not qualified.
That's never been a part of the program. That's never been a part of the program, and the initial contract set out specific things that were to be accomplished and things that were to be done. And they never were done. All three years, they were never done.
That is not true.
That's fair. All I was saying was with the 30%, we have to follow state bid law. We can't mandate a 30%.
Nobody's disagreeing with you, what you said on that. I'm not disagreeing with what you said on that. There are no quotas, there are no quotas, but the numbers, the numbers of people who are prepared to make these bids have not increased one iota. The biggest minority contract that we've had the last three years is with the Ziegler Group. They're the biggest minority contractor with the county.
And they've done what they needed to do.
Absolutely not. If they had, there'd be somebody else that was contracting with the county other than them.
Florence, and my stating is wrong when I say that we have not done all we could do to make sure that the group that we were working with had all the information they needed on bids and contracts.
If that's true, my question's going to be why?
Well, I'm just saying.
Why not?
I mean, you know, let's stop...
It's not because they...it's not because...tell me it was because somebody refused to give it to them.
Well, they just can't go in the files and stuff, they got...
No, no, they gotta ask, they gotta ask.
Why they got to ask?
If they needed, they gotta ask.
All bids that are emailed out to our bidders list were always sent to our consultant, as well as to the consultant at it DCA with public works projects. The consultant met with architects and contractors, or tried to meet with all of those to encourage them to build those relationships. With some of our, what I would call our... Where I think we could do a better job is where there are things that are not put out for bid. When we have the flexibility to call on someone like a brick mason, and we've taken great strides to improve that.
I don't...I'm not going to put you on the spot like that, Florence. These people were paid to...if they were having issues achieving the things that were in that contract, they should have brought that to this commission's attention. I actually tried to meet with these people, you were...I don't know if you were there, but Donnie was there. She got up and ran out of the office.
Because you talked ugly to them. You talked ugly to them, you just don't talk to people where you talk to them.
Were you there?
No, I wasn't.
Well, you don't know what I said to them.
I do know.
But let me just say that they're unacceptable, they're totally unacceptable.
That's your opinion, that's your opinion, nothing wrong with that.
There's a record.
You didn't agree with them, you're Commissioner Sanger.
Didn't agree with them the first time.
That is true, and I had...I was...I wasn't...I knew it was politics, and it's still politics.
It is.
And it'd be nice to have somebody on your side that gives... I know, it would be nice to have somebody on your side to give you that contract year after year.
I don't either. How's somebody give it?
Well, I mean, they have not...and again, it doesn't matter whether they get it or not. Really, you're not going to hear from me on that. But my point is...
It matters to me because I want something done.
Well, I like to have something done too, but it's obvious that we're not serious about minority participation. Unless we...I'm telling you, unless we got a black chamber of commerce, we're never going to have anything, and I can guarantee you that.
Well, that's not something that this commission can do. But what we can do is to make sure that what we want to see done in terms of our efforts to improve our numbers of dealing with the people that we represent, we can do a better job than what we've done. And we can't do it by continuing to contract with a group that has proven to us that they can't do it. And that's all I'm saying, and the evidence is clear to me. And I'm still, like I said, I have three RFPs that I've looked at, I've talked to two of the groups, and I know that now that they understand that the dollar amount was way above...too high, but they really had the right idea and the right proposal in terms of what we needed done and wanted to get done.
All of them Montgomery.
So, yes. How would you know? I'm talking to these people. And it doesn't matter to me, as long as we get Montgomeryans and Montgomery businesses involved in what the county is doing. We're still looking at it, and I think we should continue to look at it until we can come up with somebody who can effectively get this job done and get off this same group. When I'm not done.
Mr. Chairman, I got just one thing. The part about the political decision, I was probably the deciding vote, because when the interviews occurred with the different groups the first time, four years ago, I was not at that meeting, I was out of town, so I had to come back and meet with the candidates individually. And I didn't know any of them. I didn't, never heard of any of them, didn't know any of them, I was new on the commission. And I chose the one incumbent that we have now, because the price was about half of what the other price was, and there wasn't a whole lot of difference in the services they had provided. But the most important thing is, since, and I'll applaud you, Commissioner Harrison, since the meeting that you had with Carmen Ziegler, the Flatwood Project, which was well over $100,000, $100,000, was all minority, done by all minorities, 100%.
That had nothing to do...
Yeah, but okay, I applaud Isaiah too then.
I don't know how many minorities were you...
Ziegler's didn't have anything to do with that.
No, I think...
Okay, well, whoever did, it happened, so...
What did I do?
Well, you...congratulations, whatever.
On that job, that's what you did.
Well, I tried to make sure, and I'm not sure if we achieved what I wanted.
Well, just using that as an example of something that they did.
Well, Isaiah trying to make sure the project was done right.
Be serious about it, y'all. We have not done what we're supposed to do, because we've hired the wrong people to try to get it done. We have an opportunity to correct it, so that we can see some increases in the participation of minority and women-owned businesses in the hundreds of millions of dollars that Montgomery County spends every year.
Well, I agree with you.
The time is now. We need to get off of...we've been handing out this contract, giving contracts to people just to be giving it to them. Time out. Let's give it to somebody who's good. I don't mind helping a friend, but don't help a friend who has absolutely no clue of what it is you're trying to get done. So, let's find somebody who's going to get this job done for us. Somebody who is at least going to have some evidence that something was being done to try to increase these numbers. We spend over $100 million a year. How much of that money do we spend with minority business? And why don't we spend that much money with minority businesses? There are reasons for that. And if we hire the right consultants, they could tell us what these reasons are, and they could help us address them. And not just hang around, throw parties. Every time you turn around, you're being invited to a cocktail party. What for?
When you bring it...
Anybody can hand out a hamburger or a hot dog.
You're good, you're a good lawyer, Doc, you're a good lawyer, I want you to be a good commissioner.
We're looking for contract.
Alright, let's move forward.
Oh, we have another thing?
No, we're not going to move, because I'm telling you, when you start incriminating people that are doing the job, and we got people in this organization, County Commission, no doggone will, that they did not give the people what they wanted or what they needed. And you just going to ostracize a person, a person's daughter, a person's wife, a person's mama, belittling them, highly intelligent people. I mean, you wouldn't want nobody to do your folks like that.
The truth against defamation, the defense, the total defense against defamation is truth.
No, it's not, it's not like that.
Please, I'm not defaming anybody. I'm telling the truth about the performance on a contract, a public, a public contract. I'm done with it, I'm done with it. But we're going to find somebody that's going to get this job done for us and for the citizens of Montgomery.
Well, we had somebody, when you called on a party where they invite the bankers and everything, so these people could be qualified and get the loans and stuff that they need, it wasn't a party where you serve hamburgers and stuff. And when you get over 300 people that are interested in two different parties, as you called it, you didn't show up to see what was going on.
The one I showed up, the one I showed up at wasn't no bankers there.
I remember seeing it.
Wasn't no bankers there.
I remember seeing it, yeah. But I think it's time for us to move forward, you know, we just can't keep it open all the time, and whether you want the one, the one that you got, can't keep...
We don't have one, that contract is...
Well, you don't have one, I got one.
A year ago.
And thinking what you're talking about, politics, you're a politician, brother.
Yes, I know, I know, but we know...
Don't be insinuating that on me.
No, but we know that...
Don't do that to me.
We know why that they have the contract, Mr. Chairman. And it's okay, but it's okay, I'm not upset about that.
I know why you went up to community action too.
Well, yeah, because, now, I am concerned about that. I really am concerned about that. Now, you may not like that, but I'm concerned about that.
Not when you call my name.
Just a bit, Doc.
Well, I don't know when I call your name, but... Ain't no love lost with you.
Was that another item?
It doesn't matter how we act though now. It doesn't matter how we act.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more item, if I may. This, each commissioner has this information in your packet, and I've mentioned this to each of you prior to today, but I feel that we need to consider creating the position of an in-house attorney for Montgomery County. This would be someone who, on a daily basis, could work with the county on contracts and employment law and different things that we do on a daily basis. Certainly, we would still continue, we would have needs for outside counsel for certain issues that arise. But all I'm doing today is presenting this. You each have a memorandum, and I would encourage each commissioner, whatever questions you might have, to submit those, you know, to talk to Florence, talk to the rest of the commissioners, you know, however you want to, but ask any questions that you have, let's dig into this a little bit. I feel like this is the prudent thing fiscally, but also, I think, just functionally, it would benefit Montgomery County. So, you've got your memo, that's all I wanted to present. If you have any questions, maybe if we raise those by the end of this week, by the close of business on Friday, to make sure that we can satisfy all of those questions prior to our next meeting.
Any comments on that? What else we got?
I would just like to make you aware of the work I've done to consider the options for how our rental assistance program will be administered and hope to have some proposals to submit to you for your consideration by the next meeting. I've met with several companies, hope to meet with another one, and hope that we can move forward with getting these funds available.
Please, please just try to schedule a meeting with us prior to the meeting, so that we can have this thing all worked out before we come in the meeting, before our next meeting.
I will have those proposals too.
Worked out when I say, questions and all that stuff. So, we can't get any answered in this meeting, the questions that we might have, and we can move through smoothly. Because, as you can tell, the people that we have here today, the very fact that that money is available and people become aware of it, people are in need of it, they need it. We need to be able to make that money available to them, so that they can use it. That was my biggest fear, even applying for the money without having the means of being able to distribute it when we got it. So, let's try to work through this thing as quickly as we can, so that we can make sure this money has gotten to the people as fast and as efficiently as we possibly can.
Agreed.
And I'll do all I can to support you and help you with that, because I don't want to find ourselves in that position of sitting on money that people need.
Okay, it's going back, is there consensus that you want to open, it's not closed, I guess it was closed, but Mr. Harris wanted to stay open on the minority women contract. Y'all want to keep on pushing down the line, you want the RFPs that we got, you want to interview them or whatever?
My question, are they able to...you know, I did see those really big numbers. Are they able to modify once it's already been submitted? Is an organization able to modify those numbers?
Let me ask Florence. I was going to say, I would consider this a professional services contract, and, you know, it's not the same for consideration of a...
Yeah, because I would like to get it to the point that we have some to choose from and make that decision.
I think, like I said, Commissioner Walker, I've spoken to at least two of them and told them about the reasons why they were unacceptable because of the fee, and they were robbed. And talked to them about the specific duties. And I think that once we can define and refine what it is out of all these things they're proposing to do that we actually really need for them to do, that the price would be something that we can handle, something that would be acceptable. And that's what I'm asking for the opportunity to do, to bring it down to that, so that we can get somebody in the position with the experience and with the background, somebody who's going to be effective.
So, then the question before the commission is, do we give, do we give these organizations an opportunity to modify their proposal and re-present it to the commission?
No, that's not the question.
That's not, what's the question?
Florence, on the request for proposal sent out to them, was there specific things that they had to reply to as part of their responsibilities?
Yes.
So, in my personal business, if I send a RFP out and people reply, and they give me a price for that reply, then to me, that is their best price. If they go back and change it and reduce it, then I've got to reduce services to reduce what you proposed to me.
But have you read the proposals, Doc?
Yeah.
They're talking about doing stuff that we didn't even, that's not even in the RFP. They're talking about hiring people, they're talking about...
But that was their responsibility, Commissioner Harris, if they came back...
No, 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 the RFP is not a bid.
No, it's not, that's what I'm saying.
Right, it's a request for a proposal.
Yes.
So, if they propose, you can go into the proposal and pick out what it is that you need as the person requesting the proposal. And that's what I'm saying, that's the problem.
But they all should have the same opportunity to do that.
Yes.
Everybody, so we got apples to apples. If it's A, B, C, and D is what somebody, we're requesting, then they ought to be able to...
The ones who, not all should, the ones who have in it what you want, what you, the things that you need. If you have an RFP that's clearly off mark, that's no reason to talk to them anymore, because they don't even have what you want in it.
Now, I haven't interviewed anybody for this time, I did four years ago.
But you received them.
Yeah, I received them, but four...
You had that opportunity.
Yeah, four years ago, one thing that concerned me a little bit, when I did interview the ones that were higher, said, "Oh, by the way, we'll match what they're doing." So, that's even worse than, because I'd rather you give me the higher price and prove to me that you bring that value than just saying, "Oh, by the way, I'll match the lower price." So... So, um.
Well.
To be honest, I, I have not had, I'm not as close to it, but I have not had as many issues with Carmen Ziegler Moore. I'm, I'm not sure that's where her full name is, but, uh, Ziegler Moore Group. I have not had.
You, you, you get what you pay for. And, and, and-
And the city's already contracted, I guess, with Ziegler.
I've spoken to Stephen on that. This is, and-
Have they already agreed to that? Do you know?
No, no, he, he said he was gonna give them another trial for one year specifically. But this thing here, he didn't say that he was gonna do this. He, 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 my understanding with him was that he was gonna do it for the city with, with this group, giving them one more, more trial. But I, I didn't, I don't know who negotiated this. I know I didn't. Obviously, you didn't. But it's, it's here. Somebody negotiated.
Nobody negotiated. They came up-
So the city just proposed it.
It proposed.
And it, and then, and then it gets on our agenda.
It's not on our agenda?
I mean, it's, it's on, it's on our work agenda.
Yeah, work on agenda, just everything else.
Well, well.
Just like you do about the attorney.
You know, we, 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 we still don't have, in my mind, uh, uh-
My question is, do you want to bring, bring the ones who got the RFPs, the force like we did the last time?
Well, what, what I'm reading is, is are we gonna move it to, forward to vote on whether or not we want to agree with what the city has presented to us?
If you got that, y'all, everybody else quiet except two people.
Well, if we go and move it forward and we vote on it two weeks from now and it don't pass, then we're back to where we started.
I, I, you know, I think, I think the worst thing in the world to do is to force a vote on this incompetency. And I'm, I, I'll make sure that WSFA know that we're about to hire somebody that's had a contract for three years and has not improved minority participation in, in Montgomery County contracts.
Yeah.
I definitely will do it. Our Facebook is listening.
And I go on WSFA.
Been on this three years.
I go, I go on WSFA, the rest of TV stations.
It's time to move on.
And CNN is saying you're wrong.
It's time to move on. Well, my number, the numbers prove it out.
You ain't got no numbers to prove that.
Well, we, they're easy to find. They're easy to find.
So do we wanna go through that process again, looking at everybody or?
We don't, we don't have to look at everybody.
We need to do something.
So are you asking to put the RFPs in the next packet and we?
I think everybody got, yeah.
Or just, are, are you, what are you asking for? Are you asking for a vote next meeting?
No, I'm not asking for a vote.
No, I'm asking anybody. He'll tell me what you're asking for. I don't know what you're asking for.
What, what?
I don't know what anyone-
We're working through the RFPs. The, the, the RFPs have, overall, there were, there were at least two of them that had what we wanted to have done in them.
Okay.
The price was too high. And they had stuff in there that was excessive.
Okay.
So I'm working to reduce that.
Right. You're working with them so that they can re, uh, rework their RFP.
I'm working to let them know exactly what we, what it is.
So you giving them age.
So you're clarifying, you're clarifying our ask.
Right.
Because it wasn't clear, because it wasn't clear.
Well, because they, because they came in with stuff that, that, that I didn't, I, I didn't anticipate of some of the stuff that they're saying they're gonna do. And I don't think we need it done.
Okay.
And then too, I've been notified that there are other people that are, that are other companies or other consultants that are interested in the contract.
So you've been trying to extend, you're trying to extend your spirits, your, your period.
I, I, I'm trying to get somebody in here that's gonna do something, that's gonna be effective, Elton. All I'm trying to do is to get somebody that's gonna improve our numbers. I don't have anybody in mind. I don't, I didn't bring forth anybody's name. I, I ain't talked about nobody's daddy or nobody's mama or uncle. I'm talking about having somebody that I don't care if I never met them before, but they have a record, a track record, and they can come in here and improve our abysmal dismal numbers in terms of how Montgomery County, Alabama deal with minority businesses.
It's just amazing.
That's all I'm trying to do is improve that.
With everybody, all the stuff that they've been doing around here, that Montgomery County is the only one that this satisfied with. That's, that's amazing to me.
I am a Montgomery County Commissioner.
But Dan Harris is a-
I am a Montgomery County Commissioner. I don't know what the other counties are doing. I can only tell you what Montgomery County is doing. You know, and that's, 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 that's my only, that's the only thing I wanna get done.
So do you all wanna act on what the, what the city proposing? You wanna, again, do you want to interview these people that put the RFPs? RFP is a professional contract. You didn't really have to do it. I just asked the commission that. It ain't my decision.
I told you what I want.
So Florence, if we move it forward and we vote two weeks from now not to, and it, it fails on the vote, then we have to go back to the process of-
Still have to choose somebody.
Choose somebody, but we'll, we'll be choosing somebody different from what the city is. We won't be partnering with the city then.
But what's the hurry? And why should we have, why do we need to partner?
Can we make our, can we make our decision first? And then based on our decision, if our decision lines up with the city and then if we wanna have that conversation, let's do. But I think we need, I think, I think we need to make these two decisions separately. Uh, we need to decide who as a commission we want to put into this position. And then if that happens to jive with the city, we can take up that issue. But first and foremost, we have to decide who we want.
Exactly.
That's fine with me. I sure don't have a problem making the city wait on us.
We, we do not need the partnership with the city. And my conversation with the mayor was, he wasn't anticipating the partnership. I don't know where this contract came from.
Came from the mayor.
Well, he wasn't, when I talked to him, that wasn't the anticipation.
So, the question, the, the, the question is, do we, do we put on the next agenda the folks that we've gotten an RFP from, or do we delay that process? Those are the two questions before us. So, correct?
We delay the process.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, the, the question is, do we move forward or do we delay?
I think we move forward with looking at the one that we already got. You keep on extending the period.
And we're not extending the period. I said-
So we need to just, what do you think and what does everybody think?
There ain't no period on, on the RFPs anyway.
Do you wanna wait?
I don't have anything to say about this matter at this time.
Commissioner Singleton, are you, are you comfortable with moving the current names forward for discussion? Or would you like to, uh, delay the process while the current RFPs are reconsidered?
Well, let me ask this. No, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be a better man. Commissioner Harris, when are you planning on having these other two people to come before us?
I don't, I, 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 I am not talking about having somebody come before you. I'm talking about identifying, and this is what I think the entire commissioner should be interested in. I'm talking about identifying a group or, or, a company or an outfit or an operation that can come in here and do what we want get done, what we intended to have done when we put forth our initiative. That's what I'm talking about. And if it takes three months, two months, we are not, what's the hurry? Especially when you're talking about, uh, we've, we've had it for three years and nothing has happened. So, all I'm saying is, let us take the time to put an outfit, this group has had a chance. Let's give somebody else a chance. Let's give, let's put somebody in here, let's get some movement on this. I'm not saying that, uh, we, we, they have to come in and do a quarter, but they have to come in and show some progress. So all I'm saying is, and I'm not trying to rush anything. I don't see the rush. And that's absolutely no need for a partnership. We don't need the city to do this. They do what they wanna do without us. So what I'm saying is, let's take the time, and I think that among the RFPs, there are people in there who could do what we wanna have done for a price that the commission can't afford, that have the background. Let's take the time to, 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 to feel that out. This is a, this is a professional contract. This is not a bid. So these technical terms you're using, extending time and all that, 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 that does not apply in this situation. We have as long as we wanna have to determine who we wanna put in that position. And let us take our time. Well, what's the rush?
The rush is that we doing business in Montgomery County now, spending millions of dollars an hour focusing on getting it.
And, and we've been doing that for a while.
I mean, we can keep, keep on doing it. The question was that, do you, you, you-
No, no, you asked me what the question was and I just told you.
Okay.
You know?
Doug, what you, what you all wanna do?
Again, and we can't base our decision based on, um, something else, but the corporate district for the Whitewater project is moving rapidly and forward. And we're looking at over the next, uh, seventy, ninety days, Florence, we're gonna have everything bid out and done. So this is hitting us now. I mean, this, the opportunity for that thirty-eight million dollars in subcontracted work is out there.
Doug, Doug, even if you put a group in place, they're not gonna be able, I don't know what you expect them to do in thirty-nine days.
That's what I'm saying, but I don't want, I don't want-
The initiative is already, we already have the initiative. The corporate board, they have the initiative. They know what our goals are. And they can, the people that they're gonna contract with, they can put, give them that contract. The things, the type of things that we need to have done cannot be done in ninety days.
No, but we got-
This is, what we're talking about doing is not gonna, we're talking about getting, uh, businesses, minority businesses, prepared to be able to do that. So, so what we're talking, that doesn't affect that. I, the, the initiative is already in place. If we have, we need to hand that to the corporate board, so then, so to the, to the board, so they'll know when they're contracting, they need to put that in their hands and have them do it. The, the work that we're talking about hiring somebody to do is, is, it's, it's gonna take longer than ninety days, so that, that doesn't matter.
But whoever we choose, we need to work closer with them. I, I think, and, and shame on Doug, I, I've never sat down and met with Carmen Ziegler. I've never told her what I wanted and I've never met with her. I've never checked on her progress. That was my fault. I probably should have been checking during the, I've never had a sit-down meeting. You had one with her.
Yeah, but, 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 nobody's listening to me. And I did have a meeting with her and, but seemed, everybody seemed to think I'm lying.
And I know you, I mean, I know you did because I got a call right after the meeting, so I know you had the meeting.
But everybody think I'm lying. You see, the, 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 the problem with the last thing, it was, it was such a setup. I call a meeting with a person that we contracted with and Charlie Price shows up. He's not even a party to the contract or nothing, but that was the understanding, that he was a party to the contract. You see?
I guess because he was, he was with the city, I guess, is why he showed up.
If there were a misunderstanding, if there were a misunderstanding, it had nothing to do with anything that we communicated, believe me. That I communicated or this commission communicated.
Mr. Chairman, I think probably at, at this point, it's probably best that we just at least wait two more weeks and gather some more information. And then, uh-
We're gonna give it to you.
Uh, and then two weeks from now, we'll make a decision whether we wanna put somebody on the agenda for the next meeting.
I'll move for it, gentlemen.
Let's see, I gotta get back on.
Yeah, everybody remember, you need to use your, your iPad to, to find out.
We probably should have done that when the promo session ended, didn't we? I think we were a little late.
Okay, where is that?
I didn't see that.
Yeah, we should have done that before we went back in information system.
Somewhere, okay. Dan made the motion and I just seconded it, sir. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Come back on the screen.
Here we go. Go ahead now.
Dan, you move. You hit it, Dan.
I, I, I'm still closed down.
I'm gonna make the move then.
Okay, and I'll second it. And now everybody can vote.
So how do I sign out?
All right.
We just gonna hit the fog?
We're all done, Dan.
Yeah.
Except for Dan.
So I don't have to sign out?
No, you hit fog, hit fog.
A little excitement today.
Hit fog.
Normally boring meeting.